This is Andy Stack, Chair of the CA Board of Directors. I just want to remind everyone that this meeting is being livestreamed with the audio portion available to the public. The agenda and background information for tonight's meetings are available on the CA Board webpage, I encourage you to follow along using these documents. There are no presentations planned for tonight's meeting. Tonight, we have a series of three meetings. The first is the annual meeting of the members of the Columbia Association. Second meeting will be the organizational meeting of the CA Board of Directors for fiscal year 2021. And the third meeting will be a meeting of the members of the Columbia Council. Each meeting has a separate agenda with background which is available on the CA Board webpage. I would ask everyone to please remember to mute their mics while you're not talking. These open meetings are being conducted remotely in order to be consistent with the Governor's State of Emergency Declaration. Since the order prohibits more than 10 persons to gather in a physical location for a meeting, and since CA's facilities are closed to the general public, this meeting will be conducted remotely. The audio for this meeting is, of course, being livestreamed. I want to remind everyone to please mute your mic or phone unless you're speaking. And when you do speak, please remember to state your name so that everyone knows who is speaking, and speak clearly and slowly so that everyone can hear you. And of course, we need to be courteous with each other. Now, I will, as the Chair, introduce each item on the agenda. And if we need to vote, except in special circumstances, we'll do a roll call. And I will try to remember to restate a motion before any vote is taken. So now, what I'd like to do is take the roll call of the directors. If, when I call your name, would you please just acknowledge that you're here? Janet?
Here.
Shari?
Here.
Ginny?
Yes.
Dick? Dick just joined. Welcome, Dick. Lynn?
Here.
Nancy?
Yep, here.
Jess?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Renee?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to proceed to the annual meeting of the members of the Columbia Association. The basic purpose of this meeting is to elect the actual directors of the Columbia Association. Just a reminder, you can find our agenda in the background on the webpage. So, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Renee?
Lynn hasn't.
Lynn, okay. And Renee seconded.
Andy, can you display things like agendas so we know what we're voting on? I know it's been sent out, but we can't see those on the screen as well.
No, actually, I don't have them, Alan, in...
I can share.
Can you share?
Yep.
If somebody could, then...
Could you see that?
Yes. Thank you, Janet. So, this is the agenda. Lynn moved, and Renee seconded. Is there any objection to the agenda?
No.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not clear how we're doing... Since we haven't allowed residents to be here, how are we doing residents' speak-out?
I give a couple of words on that, Alan, when we get the residents' speak-out.
Well, I understand you might have a couple of words, but I don't think they've been adequate. So, I'm concerned that we're having residents speak out in name only and shutting out residents.
I see on the, oops, my... I see on the next meeting that there is residents' speak-out.
Also, on this meeting.
And we do have a process, we did put a process in where people can actually sign up and join us.
And how do we notify people of this process?
Right at this moment, no one signed up.
Except for the...
And how do we notify people of this process?
We put it on our webpage as an announcement, and we put it on the board webpage. We may need, you're right, we may need further communications.
It also, I'm not clear why I, nobody has responded to me with my suggestion that we simply give people, put on the agenda the connecting information.
I will send an email to you about that for the whole board.
Andy, Mike?
You can't send me an email for the whole board, Andy. You can only send me an email for you.
I'll send you an email and CC the board, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I just ask a question? It looks like it says the first eight individuals. Does that mean there will only be eight individuals who will be speaking?
That was our test, yeah. At the moment, we were had, we had up to eight, but we wanted to see how it went.
Is that because of time?
A part of it was time, yeah. Figuring if we give each person three minutes, that's gonna be about half an hour.
All right, because we've never been constricted by that before. We've always just had as many people as, as needed to be speaking.
And what we wanted to do also was kind of see how many people signed up, because that is adjustable.
Okay, so that's something that can be changed easily?
Yes, oh yeah.
Andy, when you say "we," who are you referring to?
Uh, well, I guess... Me as Chair, I think, probably right in this moment.
And, and also the capabilities of our system. We, Andy has been working with Janet and our IT on how we can, how we can accommodate this using our system.
Google Hangouts allows for lots and lots and lots of people, so, or Google Meetings, whatever this is called.
Right, and we're looking into that, Alan. You're right, Jess sent me an email.
I mean, I'm putting with Alan on this, I'm just not clear what we're looking into, because Google Hangouts allows for 250 people to join. And I mean, I've never seen, even on our most crowded nights, I've never seen 250 people join, so, I'm not...
Right, and, and this is Renee, and this is a time in Columbia Association where residents are becoming concerned about what's going on, whether or not the athletic facilities will open up, et cetera. And I think we need to open our doors and allow them to speak.
And, actually, we, I sent that email off today to Milton and company, and I'm sure we'll have an answer back very shortly, within a couple of days.
Why is, why is it a question and not a directive?
One, I don't direct. Remember, we're board members, I don't necessarily, I don't direct, I tell the President, ask the President. And two, I don't, I don't really know all of our capabilities and how things are constructed. And so, I generally do rely on the IT to find out how things work with the systems we have. And that's one of the reasons why I send off emails asking questions. Okay. Is there any objection to the actual agenda? Hearing none, agenda's approved. I talked about residents' speak-out. We do have the process set up, sign on at the webpage or also on our homepage. Also, remind folks that you can actually send us an email using the link either on our webpage or at boardmembers dot, board dot members dot fiscal year 21 at columbiaassociation.org. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our last annual meeting, which was held on the 9th of May, 2019.
I didn't hear a vote on the approval of the agenda.
Oh, I asked if there was any objections, Alan.
Oh, was that a vote?
Yeah, remember la- last meeting? You asked me in particular, instead of my roll call, is the first ask if there was any objection? And if not, there was an approval, and if there wasn't objection, we take a roll call vote.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I didn't realize we were going by that. I appreciate that, thank you, and I will just, I will just record my objection.
Okay.
I move for approval of the agenda, May 9th agenda.
No, no, I mean, minutes, we're on the minutes of May 9th.
I'm sorry, May 9th minutes, uh, move for...
Second.
Okay, Ginny moved and Renee seconded. So, let me ask, is there any objection to the approval of the minutes of May 9th?
I have no objection, but I should have abstained since I was not at that meeting.
All right, that makes sense. Okay, with that extension, the minutes are through, thank you. The next item is the election of directors to the, to the board, and I want to welcome Jess, our newest member, who represents the village of Hickory Ridge. So, I will ask, is there a motion to adopt this resolution electing the 10 reps to the CA Board of Directors?
So moved.
Nancy moved.
Second.
Who seconded?
Renee.
Renee.
May I make a comment after a second? Could we please put those names into the minutes for next year? In other words, the names of the directors that we're pointing?
Okay.
That's all, just a simple procedural thing.
Good idea.
Also, I know it's been our, our habit to accuse ourselves or abstain if we weren't at a meeting, but I just looked up Robert's Rules of Order, and Robert's Rules does not prevent one from approving minutes that one was not part of the meeting.
Right, oh, I leave that up to individuals. Correct. Yes. Okay, so we have the resolution, we've moved and seconded to appoint the directors. Is there any objection? If not, the motion then is approved unanimously, thank you. And, welcome, Jess, you're now officially one of our directors.
All right.
Your life is about to change.
I'm living the dream.
I wouldn't agree with that.
I am now going to adjourn the annual meeting and proceed to the organizational meeting of the CA Board. So Janet, if I could ask you to please hold up that packet. And thank you for doing this. And once again, I will remind people that the agenda for the organizational meeting, as well as the background, is available on the CA Board webpage. Thank you, Janet. Okay, so you can see the agenda basically concerns the organization of the board, positions, committees, liaison. Can I remind everyone to please mute your mic if you're not talking, because I can hear some feedback? All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
For the organizational meeting?
So moved. Ginny?
Ginny, okay. Second?
I'll second, Nancy.
Nancy. Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? If not, the...
It looks like, it looks like Unknown had her hand up.
Unknown?
Renee.
I'm thinking, but that's okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not always seeing everybody, so...
You don't have to, I'm just thinking.
And if you, if you go down to the three dots in the bottom bar, you can make it a grid view where you can see everybody at once.
Oh, okay, what I've been doing is looking at the side to keep track of who's all in the meeting.
Change layout?
Yeah, change layout.
Yep.
No, you can't, it doesn't change if, if somebody's sharing something for this...
That's okay.
Okay. So, the agenda's approved. The first item here is election of Chair and Vice Chair. So, I'll take them one at a time.
Okay, I move that Andy Stack be elected Chair.
I second that, Ginny.
Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to move that Ginny Thomas be elected as Chair.
Second.
Nominations don't need to be seconded.
I don't care.
May I speak?
Sure, Ginny.
I, I wanna, uh, this is kind of a shock. I want to thank you very much for the consideration, but I really do not want my name put forward as Chair, please. So, I really have a lot of confidence. This is going to be a very crucial year, and I have a lot of confidence that Andy, his skill sets will be needed in order to lead us forward for this, and I, I really think that's important, that we continue with his leadership. So, I want to thank you, you know, thanks, I guess it was Sheri and Renee, but I please ask that I be allowed to withdraw my name, or I think I can do that, please. I would appreciate if you'd withdraw, well, whatever, you don't have to withdraw your first and second, but I would appreciate if you'd consider that.
All right, I would just like to, I would just like to make a statement about this process, if I may. And, and thank you, I appreciate what you're saying, Ginny. But in the past, the board has always had shared leadership, and there has been, usually, board chairs serve for two years at a time. And I know that, you know, this is a very difficult time. But this, we've all been on the board for a while. Ginny, you have served in so many capacities and so many leadership capacities, and you've had the experience with being Vice Chair. I think this is a time that would be very appropriate for the leadership to, to pass, to shift to somebody who has, who has been there already, where none of us, except for just me, knew to this situation. And, and I think that would put us back into a situation where we have re-establishing this, this sense of a shared, shared leadership amongst the board. So, I'm, I'm not trying to put any, any pressure on you, but I did think that that was an important statement to make.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
I want to, I want to thank you, and I honestly feel, I've only been Vice Chair for one year, and I honestly feel Andy and I have really developed a partnership where there are strengths, there are weaknesses, we complement each other, and I honestly think the leadership is shared by the entire board. We're all in this together, we're in a crisis situation, and we all are the leaders of this board. We all have to solve whatever problems we'll be faced with, and we're really going to, and I know this is going to happen, we're all going to work together, we all have strengths, and it's, I don't see just one person in charge, I see us all working together, and I think we're committed to do that. I think we have a phenomenal, fantastic board, so I kind of, I look forward to working with all of you, but I think at this point, Andy would be our best choice for Chair, and I really just feel, feel strongly about that, so I would really like to withdraw my name, please.
Could I?
Sorry, could I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
When you say shared leadership, are you referring to times in the CA's period in the past where one person has been Chair for half the year and somebody else Chair for the other half the year? Are you talking about that sort of, as you were saying, rotation, two years on, then, then get off?
I, I think it's been done in, in different ways. And I think that it, it reflects the fact that we are representative board, we're representing the community. And the idea is that as people became more involved in, in CA, working as Vice Chair, they were aware of all the things that needed to be done, they were aware of the calendar, they were aware of all these aspects, and it just passed to the next person, and then it rotated through. And I think there are a lot of strengths about that. So, I know, Andy, you, you've done a yeoman's job over the years. I think that this may be your, what, your fifth or sixth year as Chair? Eight. Eighth year.
Eight? That long?
Yes. It goes so fast.
Yeah, because Russ was in there.
Time five, and you're having fun.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Russ was in there, and I can't remember the...
Then it's seven and a half, because Russ, I don't know, Russ split a year with you, that's the only...
Right, and then, there was another year, and Michael was a Chair, and I remember when I was on the board, and I think, oh shoot, from Harper's Choice, Cynthia was also Chair.
Yes. And I was, and I was Chair. Can I interrupt?
And Shari was Chair.
Let me interrupt. I came in, this is my eighth year, I'm beginning, which I can't believe it. And Andy, you've been on the Chairman of the Board, you've done a wonderful job. Everybody knows you do an exceptional job, but I agree with what Sheri is saying. You've heard this from me in the past. I think with the strength of the board, it is important, and I understand what Ginny said, we all are leaders, but, in truth, the Chair and the Vice Chair, together, but particularly the Chair, have a lot of power that the normal board member does not have, and has a lot more information that is not always, unfortunately, and we've discussed this, disclosed to the rest of the board. So, this is an issue that has been brought up before, and again, and I think it's been about three years running that I've brought it up, and I'm glad to see this time it wasn't me, that for the health of the organization, I don't expect things to change tonight. Ginny obviously does not want that role, and nobody else is stepping forward. But I think that moving forward for next year, I sincerely hope that, that something happens this year so that we do establish a position where, if Ginny is going to be Vice Chair this year, that she will either choose to be Chair next year, or somebody in the organization will choose to be Vice Chair and Chair next year, because we need to, for the growth and the health of any organization, you cannot keep having the same leadership year after year after year, because we need new ideas, new ways of doing things, and I'll get off my soapbox.
If I could add to that, I agree with a lot of that. The, I also think that some of this is our own doing. Some of, some of the problems you were talking about, Nancy, because I, I remember back before I was on the board and before Andy was Chair, when Barbara Russell was Chair, and she was told, as Chair, all you get to do is call the meeting to order and, and call, you know, and call it adjourned. Everything else has to be shared by everybody. And so, somewhere between that extreme and the problems that you've identified, we've allowed the Chair to amass more authority, control, responsibility, power, whatever words one wants to put on it. Those are decisions that we don't have to keep, keep in place. We could, we could decide the Chair has different responsibilities, and board members have different responsibilities than we've allowed to have happen.
You know, there is also the issue about burnout, and, and I do want to, to address that as well. In some ways, it's, it's easy to let someone who has the kinds of capabilities that Andy has and the background and experience to take on all of the responsibility. But that is something else that the board really has to look at very carefully. And I hope this year, we will think more about using ad hoc committees to address some of the issues that we've had. I hope that we will be doing more community outreach involving all of the members of our board. We can work in pairs, we can do a lot of other things to assist Andy, and we can be much more involved with the senior leadership team. It doesn't all have to fall on one person's shoulders. So, I hope that that's understood.
Yeah, I think we all agree with you, Sheri, on that.
And, and I, and I will say that, I mean, I think both, both Alan and Sheri have really, you know, highlighted something. I would really appreciate if some of the other directors would start taking some of those responsibilities, because what has happened consistently is it ends up falling on the Chair because it has to get done. And, and even when we get committees, I'm pushing like crazy to get the responses in a timely minute, but I would really, really like the board, you're right, board to step up. And I think, Shari, you know, you're right too, in that when people step up and take other responsibilities, then you're right, they get prepared to be Chair, they get to see how things are done. And so, I think, you know, really good points for this year. I just think, you know, people need to really kind of consider the commitment and make the commitment to kind of help out. All right.
I think we just need to be clear who we're helping. It's not helping you, it's helping the board.
It's helping the board, right.
And the Association.
Well, it's also helping the residents of Columbia. I mean, that's what we're all in this for.
Yes.
And the staff. We can't forget the staff that have been making a lot of sacrifices in the last couple of months. Unbelievable sacrifices to keep the organization going, so, I think, you know, we're all in this together, and we're all gonna really come out of this and do well, it's my hope, and I know all of our hopes. So, maybe if we move on with the vote?
Sure.
All right, Ginny, I'll let you off the hook.
I owe you big time, Sheri, I owe you. My husband owes you, our kids owe you, our grandchildren owe you.
All right, we'll move on.
It was unanimous, okay.
Andy's been nominated, is there any other, any objection? Do you want a roll call vote, or do you want?
No.
No.
All right. Okay, thank you.
You mean we're going to...
Let's move on to Chair, Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Ginny, this is Dick.
Thank you, Dick.
Second.
Any other nominations? Is there any opposition? If not, I'd like to congratulate you, Ginny, being Vice Chair.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, I, thank you guys for your confidence.
And we didn't have...
We haven't voted yet, we haven't voted, yeah, we haven't, whatever.
Yeah, we did, because there was no objection, so...
Well, I want to thank you, and I think you all know, I talked to each one of you what my commitment is to you and the organization and the residents, so I won't repeat it all here, but thank you. Look forward to working with you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is committees and liaison. Okay, does somebody have the mic? Could you please mute? Thank you. So Janet, could you bring up the?
Does he, you know, are we doing the Inner Harbor next or what?
No, we do committees and then Inner Harbor.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, that's, that's how got put on the agenda, we kind of kept it from what it was last year and the previous year. Okay, for the audit committee, uh, Dick Renee and Janet have volunteered to serve. Is there anyone else who wants to serve on the audit committee? Well, congratulations to Dick Renee and Janet. Um, so for the risk management committee, uh, I have Nancy and Jess.
I'll do it.
I'm sorry, who?
I'll, Renee.
Renee?
Yes.
Anybody else want to serve? Cause I do have.
Andy, I'll do it again.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Anyone else?
Is on two, so is it, I mean, I'm just suggesting that because there are only three people on the committees, that maybe Renee wouldn't mind if she put it off for another time since she's already on audit?
That's fine.
Looks like four, there are three blanks, but there are four slots if you count up the number of people on the left side.
Yeah, what, what happened is last year we, we expanded the board to have four spots on the committee.
Nancy, I'm fine not doing it.
Oh, well, it, I mean, it's, I'm just making a suggestion because I think the more we spread it around rather than all one person doing it all, it's, just seems to be a more efficient way to do it.
That's fine.
All right, so we want to go with Nancy, Jess and Lynn?
But there are four slots for board members.
That, that happened, that happened last year because I think there, there were only three slots really, but four board members really wanted it, Rafi was one of them. So, uh, it was my suggestion that, well, all right, let's have all four on it, but, but really there's always been three slots.
Anyone can sit in.
Yes.
On the, on the meeting, so, so bear that in mind.
Right, and I, I think what would be nice is that for all of the closed meetings, whether it's risk management, architecture, whatever, that we are made aware of these closed meetings. So if we choose to sit in, we know that they're happening.
Yep, good point.
We are, we get, we get the notification, but I guess, I'm not clear if Renee is interested, why not let Renee continue?
Alan, I'm only interested because I think risk management is going to be a big committee over the next 24 to 36 months because of the COVID virus. And I think that there's some work that needs to be done there, but I don't need to be the person to do it.
Yeah, but nobody else has stepped up, so you're the only other person who's stepped up. So I'm not clear why we're bumping you off in favor of nobody.
I thought Nancy, Jess and Lynn volunteered, Nancy, Jess and Lynn, right? One of the second asked to serve on it.
Right.
So we have three that asked to serve on it and any of us that want to attend can attend. I, I'm gonna go to some of these, I agree with Renee, I'm gonna sit on, on some of the risk management.
Was Rafia a voting member last year?
Yes.
Of that committee, so why not keep, keep the expansion and allow Renee to, to be on? I'm, I'm not, something happened that I'm not clear about.
Nothing happened, it's, I, I was just trying to have every member of the board be on as many different committees, but because Renee wanted to be on tho, those two in particular, I thought it would be more efficient if we had three other members rather than somebody who was on each of them. I was, it was just my own thing, just ignore it. Do what you want.
I would get you Nancy if, if there was somebody else who wanted to be part of it. And then I could see Renee stepping aside for that.
Always in the past, there have been three members, last year they expanded it because four members very much wanted to be on it. So I suggest that if Renee is desperately in want of being the voting member on the risk committee, then you speak up. Otherwise, let's please move on.
Yeah, so Renee, do you want to be on or do you want to just attend the meeting?
I do not need to ruffle feathers over risk management, so take my name off.
All right, we'll go with just the three. Next one we have are, um, the BOC and I very would like people to, we got eight slots, so I very would like eight members to kind of divvy it up. Who would like to go first for the first BOC meeting in June 1st?
I would, Renee.
Renee?
I'm happy to do it.
Shari?
Yes.
Who would like to do the second meeting, which is Tuesday, September 1st, cause went into.
Excuse me, sorry, can I get a little background here? Because I was looking at this and it looked like there were two spots and I assumed that this was sort of like an executive committee, so the chair and vice chair would be there. So can you explain to me what the rotating and, and how that's been going?
So what we've been trying to do is rotate all of the board members on this committee.
Okay.
To give everyone kind of an opportunity to participate in its functions. As you said, it's kind of like an executive committee. And so, one, you get to see how it works and two, you also then get to add your opinion, um, in. And so for the last couple of years, what we've been trying to do is, is rotate and get everyone on the board involved in that committee, so everybody's aware of it.
Andy, the most, the most important point is that it sets the agenda.
Yes.
And, and looks at the topics that the board is going to be addressing.
Yes.
Gotcha. So, so that's why, even though the meetings are, again, available, not everyone can attend every meeting. So we want to make sure that we have a certain number of people who make that commitment to being there so that the topics that are most important get on the agenda when they need to be on the agenda.
Gotcha.
Well, it al, it also sets up who votes, cause we can all attend, but we can only vote on the ones that we are assigned to or they were subbing for somebody.
Correct.
I mean, it is, and it is good to have the other board members that, you know, there on the committee and not just make it the chair and the vice chair and, and the president. It gives more viewpoints. Okay, so.
Thank you.
What, so do I have to volunteers for the, the September meeting?
I will, Andy.
Okay.
I can do that one.
And Alan.
Uh, can I get in here?
Um, whoa, 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 yeah, hang on a second. Um, I'm interested in that one because if that is, I, I, and I'm just trying to understand this because I'm looking at the agenda, how you have the meetings laid out, scheduled. So the board operations committee sets the agenda for September, October, November?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I mean, I would. I would express interest in that because if part of the September is Village Financials, since that's something I am, you know, intimately aware of, I, I would appreciate being involved in that, but I am also. Yeah, I, I'm also open to attend any of them, truthfully. You know, my, my, my goal is to sort of jump in and learn. So, um, but I want to be able to offer any expertise that I can on anything that is useful.
Jess, you're on it, Alan just withdrew, you're on it for September.
Cool, thank you, I appreciate that, Alan.
So we have Nancy and Jess.
Not a problem.
All right, the third meeting, November 30th.
Wait a minute, I, first of all, there's a lot of background noise and I really do have a question I would like to ask.
Sure.
You have June 2nd down here twice, I mean, June 1st, there's only two people there for June 1st, right?
Yes.
Renee and Shari.
And for September, there's two people, that's Jess and Alan?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Jess and you.
Oh, I thought it was me, no?
It's Jess and Lynn.
It's Lynn.
Lynn.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. So what I have is Renee and, and Shari for the first meeting in June and Jess and Lynn for the second in September. And now we're going to the third one, which is November 30th, who would?
I could move to that one.
Could I please do November, cause that's the only one I can make without everyone? Thank you.
And I'll do.
I'll do it with you.
Okay.
We have a fight.
No, go ahead, Alan, that's fine.
And then on the last one, March, can I do Nancy and Dick?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, liaisons. So I, as I said, I did, um, send out a message to all of you of people who responded to me. Nancy has asked to be on the aquatics. Any problems?
No, I'm fine, I've done it for a couple of years, I'm fine stepping aside.
I know you've done it, Alan, and if you wanted it, you can have it.
I'm fine stepping aside.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, Ginny has volunteered for climate.
Yeah, I would love to continue on that, I think we're really just getting started.
Um, okay, Janet has volunteered for the art center. Okay, golf and greens, who would like to do golf and greens?
Oh, Andy, I'd like to continue on that.
You want to say, okay. Health and fitness, Dick has volunteered. I volunteered for IT. How about the international multicultural? Somebody mute their phone because we're getting lots of.
I'll, I'll do that one.
Thank you, Alan. How about the millennial?
Sorry, your mute works really well.
You're muted.
Sorry. Okay, I was, um, I was working with them last year unless anybody else would like to step in? Okay.
Okay, okay, how about senior?
I've already got two, so I'm not taking any.
Um, then, does anybody else want to? Then I'll do it.
Thank you, Renee. Uh, for teen and middle school, uh, Jess volunteered.
I'm, I would be interested in doing that one, yeah.
Great.
Thank you. Tennis, Nancy?
If anybody else wants it, please speak up. Okay.
And last is watershed.
I'll continue with them, if that's okay.
Thanks, Shari.
Um, Andy, actually tennis is really a little bit tennis and a little bit of pickleball too, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Nancy, you got both.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's fine.
Double trouble.
All tennis. All right. That's it for the, uh, committees and liaisons. Like to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is selection on the Columbia Association Representative, the Inner Harbor Trust Board of Directors.
I, I'd like to, is it appropriate to move at this point?
Yes, yes.
I, I would love to nominate, um, Janet and Lynn. I think they've been doing a phenomenal job for the last year. Um, Lynn a little bit longer than that. And, uh, this is a really crucial time in terms of the Inner Harbor Trust, its relationship to CA, its related, the whole, a lot of issues as we all know. And I, I just would love to see them continue, they have the knowledge, they have the experience, they have the dedication. Uh, they paid me to say that, no, I'm kidding.
This is Renee, I second it.
All right, anyone else? Any objection? If not, uh, we will appoint both Lynn and Janet as our reps to Inner Harbor. Congratulations.
Thank you, we're ready.
Willing, ready and able, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, next up, uh, we do have to appoint the officers of the Columbia Association. You know, president, vice president, secretary, treasurer. These are current officers and the motion is to reappoint them. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Nancy moved.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What exactly is the role of, of these officers?
First and foremost, have something to put on the 990 in those places.
Yeah.
Do they have any, do they have any specific duties?
Yeah, the assistant secretary is the person on the liquor license at the golf courses, I believe.
Yes.
And that is the reason why they're an officer.
Right, right, in order to sign the liquor license, you have to be an officer of the organization, an actual officer of the corporation. And state law requires then secretary and treasurer.
So, so these are basically just formalities?
No, they're part of your business.
They're not formalities, we, we sign contracts, we, as I said, it's more than just the liquor license. We sign contracts, we've, we've received official papers on behalf of the Columbia Association. It's, it's, it's just the corp, it's requirement of corporations.
Okay, so it's kind of a formality, basically, I mean, it's, is there a decision-making piece of this or?
Also, Dick, if you go to our bylaws, there are specific duties are outlined for each one of the officers.
Okay, I'll take a look at that, thank you.
Okay, so Nancy moved, is there a second?
Second. Ginny, second.
Okay. Okay, so this is the motion to appoint the four people listed there for our officers. Uh, is there any objection? If not, approved in unanimously.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I'm fine with the approval. But why is it the assistant secretary, who's the secretary and why is that person not an officer?
Susan Krabi is the secretary.
Susan is the secretary.
Oh, president and secretary, I didn't see that, so.
Okay. Next up is, um, our schedule of our work sessions and meetings. So if you notice, um, this is the actual date. And then, um, attached to that is the, um, two-page, um, form that Shari and I had worked out to kind of give you the look at it from a month-to-month basis and what each of those does.
So can we take these one at a time? First, the board meeting and work session dates. And then secondly, the, um, I guess the agenda items or what, the worksheet that goes behind it?
Sure, okay, so. So you can see where our meetings are, generally, work sessions are the first.
It's the second Thursday.
Second Thursday of each month and then the meetings are the fourth Thursday each month, except for November and December.
Okay, um, so.
We've scheduled a couple of extra work sessions, which we did last year, which seemed to work very well. And, and one is in July, we scheduled, um, a work session for the third Thursday to just address the advisory committees. And in October, we did a work session just for the budget on the third Thursday and that seemed to work out well. Um, and we're going to do a third Thursday in January for the budget. Since this is one of those, uh, second year of the budget, well, but we'll be doing the budget the whole year, but, um.
So, um, I, I appreciate that, um, everyone wants to take off August, but I am deeply concerned about the financial condition of CA. And I think it would be ill-advised to not have a meeting for five or six weeks, knowing that we are not sure what's happening economically, um, in the community as well as, uh, with the virus. So I, I think we have to tentatively schedule a meeting in August.
I agree with you and I think when you say tentative, you know, we can always say, look at it in the July 23rd meeting and say, well, we don't need it, so let's.
Right, I, I would be more, right, I agree.
So what do the other board members think?
I think that's a very good point. I think there is, um, you know, everything is a moving target right now. And it is very difficult to stay on top of things, particularly as. And it is very difficult to stay on top of things, particularly as we are looking at over September possibly being a very crucial time um, in terms of what's happening with schools and, and other types of things. So I, I think scheduling August is an important, would be an important change to make this year, given the circumstances.
Yeah, and I, I would think that we could do one meeting, we could have half of a work session, and then a meeting following it in case we needed to approve or amend the budget or other items.
Yeah, I, I concur. I think we definitely need to be on top of this budget situation. I think an August meeting is definitely needed.
I agree too.
I support it.
Yeah.
Okay, so what if we did the third Thursday? It's kind of an unusual time, but that kind of positions us kind of like right between the last July meeting and the beginning of September.
That would be good.
That, that, that sounds good.
Could you give me the date? Or could you just put the date in that and then send it back out, Andy, so we can put it on our calendars?
I will pass this one to Janet, who actually does this.
That's fine. Thank you so much.
Um, so, on your calendars, mark the third Thursday of August.
August 20th is the date.
Okay.
What was that date?
We need to make, 20th.
August 20th.
I'll, I'll be on vacation, but we need to make sure we got call-in facilities. Assuming we're face-to-face by then.
We'll be sending out a revised, uh, agenda with that date on it, so just, you know.
Um, this is Jess. I do have a quick question. Um, in terms of if, oh, I, there's one date on here that could potentially be a conflict for me, and I just didn't know what the, you know, what the, the expectation is if we cannot be at a meeting.
Oh, you, one, you can call in.
Okay.
Um, because people have done that. They've been, uh, out of town, they've been, um.
What if you can't call in? Because that, so, October 8.
Then, then, then you miss it. Then, then that happens.
I mean, I just didn't know if that was a big deal. Okay.
No, we all miss meetings from time to time.
October 8 is potentially the date for my big fundraiser for Girls on the Run. Now, at this point, we don't know if we're having it, but that is the date that we will be having it if we are having it. So just a heads up.
But Jess, the good news is that's a work session. The voting is done the fourth Thursday of the month.
Okay.
So that's the second Thursday, yeah.
Just, just wanted to, to get clarification on that. Thank you.
A couple of things. One, one is, I'm really glad you're asking questions. I think that's, I, I want to support that. Um, and second, uh, just to make it clear, we don't, until we, until and unless we change it, uh, we do not have the ability to call in to, uh, closed meetings. Or we've not allowed the ability to call in to closed meetings. These are all open meetings, but.
These are all open meetings.
I just want to make, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. That's helpful.
But, uh, Jess, even if you don't go to the meeting, you still get all the background material, um, gets sent out and everything. All right, anything else?
Um, what do you mean by anything else?
On, um, schedule.
Oh, no, the schedule is fine.
So, yeah. So can I move that we approve the schedule as amended?
Sure.
Second.
Second.
Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Give me a chance. Um, so that was Renee and Shari?
Yeah.
Okay, approve amended schedule. Um, is there any objection? If not, unanimous. Thank you.
I imagine that we can be flexible with the schedule if there is a need of additional meetings.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thought I'd throw that in for anybody.
Yeah, I mean, we'll give you the appropriate notice as we, as we have done in the past.
Now, I have another question. Um, there, I have the schedule here for the, the year, the proposed plans, but we only have new, one new board member, uh, Jess, and I'm, I'm sure she's more clued in than the average new board member, but I think it might be who, her and, and the board, if she were to have an orientation session. Have you discussed this with her, and is there plans for this?
So, I can say that, um, Shari and Nancy, I'm sorry, Shari and Renee have been working on, I'll call it a board orientation. Um, which, we haven't scheduled yet, and I'm still working with them.
Okay, this should be done soon than later, obviously.
Right, but Jess did get an overview of CA.
Was that the slides?
Yes, the slides.
Could we get a copy, could I get a copy of those, possibly?
I can send it to you, Renee.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so she got a, an overview, um, of CA with Milton that.
Okay.
The, the board orientation, I'm really hoping Shari and Renee will work something out.
Yeah. We'll do that.
And in the meantime, as you can tell, I'm not afraid to stop and ask questions.
Good for you.
And she has her C, email address, so make sure you include her.
Yes, please. Add me to your list.
Beginning, uh, tomorrow or Monday, I don't know which day, make sure you use the fiscal year '21 board email if you want to send it to all of us. And, and that has all the correct email addresses.
Okay. Good.
Nancy, anything else? I mean, huh?
On, on that topic, no. Um, I don't know if this is the time to raise the issue that I sent out, um, a message to the entire board about villages, and I don't know if there's any further information about this, or if anybody.
Can I, can I intervene about the schedule?
Yes.
Uh, we, we had one other element, which is the president's evaluation.
Yes.
Um, I, I was looking through my files, um, at the, um, uh, board policy. We are actually supposed to have two scheduled evaluations. One is a less formal process of feedback kind of process. The other is a formal evaluation.
Yes.
So we, we do have to set dates for those. We did not have an evaluation this year.
That's right.
And so we need to get those on the schedule. We need to do it sooner rather than later. Get them in there.
Okay, so, um, Janet, if you kind of scroll up a little bit, in November, if you look under November, um, in the last column, midterm discussion with the president on performance. Um, it will be right after the BOC meeting. That's historically when we've been doing it. So that's already been scheduled. So we will do basically the midterm the same night we do the BOC meeting. And in turn of, um, the evaluation occurs in March, and it is to be determined, I mean, sorry, in April. Um, and I would like to bring to the board the discussion on the evaluation. Um, if you remember, I sent an email out, um, a month or so ago, Renee and I, and Dick had worked on it. Um, and so I'd really like to bring that to the board, so that we can finalize this in plenty of time for evaluation.
Well, I think, am I allowed to talk? Um, I think that we should bring that, uh, my first question is, Andy, doesn't that, does that need to be in a closed session since it involves personnel issues?
Not the actual form. I mean, should we actually do the evaluation?
That's in a closed meeting.
Right, that's in a closed meeting, but the actual form.
Okay, I think that the form needs to go to the, at the next meeting. I think we need to have an evaluation now concerning last year, so that we get on the six-month track. I just think it's.
It'd be a good idea to know what, what, what criteria we're using to be evaluating the president through the year.
Right, and that's, and I agree with Renee that that's a great topic for our next meeting. Um, although I will tell you, at our next meeting, which is May 28,
Can I move it? The schedule?
Will be the finances.
Okay, so I that's, I, I, we can talk about the finances in a second. So, on the next meeting, we're going to have the evaluation. I also think that, that, um, on that meeting, the next meeting, we need to have, um, something from risk management that talks about any charter amendments that are necessary for us to understand what our risk tolerance is, given the fact that we've drawn $3 million out of that account. And we have employees and people who will be using our facilities. What is our risk tolerance for loss, given those items? And what is going to be the procedure for staff to take their proposals for policies, procedures, to keep both employees and, um, residents safe? They should be reviewed by risk managers. So we need to have a report back from risk management immediately, and a policies and procedures for them to review it before it comes to the board.
So Renee, and to make sure I capture it all, can you send me it all in an email?
I can do that.
And CC the board.
Absolutely.
Andy?
Yes, Milton?
Also, in, in your schedule, given CA's normal practice, is that you, you need to find, I think it's six months out from the end of the president's contract, you make a decision on what you're going to do next.
Oh, all right. Yes, that's a good point.
Is that November or October?
That'd probably be around October, November timeframe.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me.
Well, also, giving that, if there, if there's a possibility, given the, the environment, if you're going to be recruiting, you probably need to give yourself more time.
Yes.
Okay, I'm a good point. All right. Anything else on the schedule?
So, oh, may, just for a point of clarification, are we going to have, I would say on the, both the work sessions and at the meetings, that we put a time slot in for financial statement, et cetera, review, and that we can always pull it off once things settle down. But given the situation, uh, not just at CA, but with the economy in general, I think that thing, something what, tentatively on the agenda for every meeting, uh, for the near future only makes sense.
Okay.
I would agree. We all heard it, and that sounds like a BOC thing to follow up on.
Right, we'll definitely make sure it goes to the BOC. All right. So I think we finished the agenda. So I'm going to adjourn the organization meeting. We're going to go to the Columbia Council meeting.
Well, A- Andy, before you adjourn, before you adjourn the meeting, are we going to be coming back to a meeting of the, of the board, or are we going to end with the Columbia Council meeting?
There wasn't any meeting of the board scheduled for tonight, Alan.
I get that, but, but, but we need, then I'm not ready to adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
Uh, I, I need to know, we were supposed to know by the end of April. We expected to know by the end of April about the loans. Haven't heard anything. Have we gotten the loans? Where are we with that?
Milton?
We have signed a term sheet, but now we're in the process of negotiating what is called a trust agreement, and that's still going, that's ongoing.
So may I have a copy of the term sheet?
Yes, we will get your copy.
I have, I have a question, um, which the board is aware that I'm going to ask. Um, I don't know if Susan is on this, uh, call or not, but I was told that Susan was going to ask for approval of the board to not send the first tranche of money to the villages, um, which was due by the middle of May. Today's the 14th. And I'm wondering when that money is going to go to the villages.
Well, if he, Nancy, Susan is out there, but also I can, you remember the email I've sent to the board, sent to the villages uh, about two weeks ago with suggested amendments to the, uh, management contract?
Right.
And in that memo, I, if I recall correctly, I think we, we stated that the, uh, normally the, the, uh, man, normally the, uh, the villages receive their, uh, uh, the assessment share payments once a quarter, but we stated in there that, given that we're in the process of, of, of getting this loan, we will hope, we will hope to get the loan in May, and it's, but we would not send those first payments until we see the loan.
Um, I, that's, this is the first I've heard that from you, Milton, and I'm afraid I did not.
It's not so much that you're hearing it from me, it was in the letter that I sent to the villages.
I didn't read the letter that went to.
The letter you sent to the villages said that you would be submitting some proposed amendments at some point in the future. It didn't say what those amendments were.
Right, and, and, and they're only good once both sides of the contract sign off on them. This is not a one-way contract.
Every one, the board approved the amendments at your last meeting.
That we don't have to pay the villages?
No, we didn't, we did not do that. We, we, uh, at the time, we were talking about negotiating, renegotiating the contract. It takes two parties to renegotiate the contract. We can't just arbitrarily, unilaterally say, we're not going to pay you, or we're going to delay the payment. So we need to clarify just exactly what it is we're doing, and make sure that this is something that, that both sides of the contract are in agreement on. And, uh, the other thing is, you, you said that, uh, uh, the term sheet's been signed. Uh, there's another piece of this. I didn't quite catch what that was, so I'd like to get some idea when you think that'll happen. Because I, I had a, I had a meeting with my village board last night, and, uh, there's a lot of concern. They've got bills to pay, and they don't have rental income from.
Everyone has bills to pay. We understand that. And as I said, I, I told you, we have signed the term sheet, and now we have another part of the documents, and there's multiple documents. There's a trust agreement that we have to work through.
Okay, when do you think that's going to happen?
I can't give you. It's a negotiation. We have.
I can accept that, but what do I tell my village about, you know, laying people off and not paying some of their bills and, uh, some of the other things that are, that are very much on their, on their minds?
I can appreciate that, Dick. If you want me to have the conversation with your village manager, I will outline the situation, but that's what we're, that's what we're talking about. Keep in mind that we have not received the annual charge payments for 2021. We just had a practice in the management contract that we would, we would pay the payments over four quarters.
Okay, now, I, I, I just got, I just checked my mail before this meeting, and you have sent me the contract, so I'm looking forward to reading it and, and seeing what the situation is, but it seems if we have a contractual agreement, uh, we need to, to stick to it or to get approval from the other people on the contract, uh, to deviate from it. So, uh, I, I'd like, uh, our village manager that she can expect a call from you.
Now, she can ask, if she has questions, you please ask her to contact us, and we also saw in the response that we sent to you, we stated that if the village, if, if the individual villages have a concern, we will work with them individually.
Okay, well, uh, yes, I saw that in the letter, and I appreciate that. Uh, so anyway, I will suggest to Ingrid that she give you a call and, uh, and have a chat, and, uh, in the meantime, I'm going to read the contract and, and just see what our obligations are.
A point of information.
Sure, sure.
Um, Milton, when you say that you're going to discuss this individually with individual villages, you do realize that all of the villages are dealing with the very same situation. We all have the same designation. Um, there, there are funds that, um, may or may not be available. Nobody is able to do any kind of rental. Why would we not address this as a group? Everyone is pretty much in the same boat. I think everyone has expressed the same concerns. So let's pull together around this and do it together.
Right.
Shari, I understand that. All I said, that if the villages have individual, we would, we could, we can work with the villages individually. We only have one concern that has been brought to us, and that was what Brit, Dick shared with us from, uh, Doisy Search. All of the board members know that one of the things that we have a concern with right now is our cash flow. We're not trying to hold back anything that's on the contract or that we know that should be going to the village. be going to the villages. But we have, one of the things we're working through and why we're pursuing this loan is our cash flow requirements.
So.
Milton, you've heard from more than one village. You've heard, and if you haven't, you've certainly heard from more than one tonight. I'll add my village's voice to the same choir. Could you, could you say what would be the impact on CA if we paid the villages what we owe them tomorrow?
How much cash is in the bank?
Well, I'm not going to.
Say again, I couldn't hear that.
I'm not going to state it. Susan, are you out there?
Yeah, I'm here. So.
Okay. Normally, what is the, what is, what would be the quarterly payment to the, to the 10 village, village associations?
$894,000. That's for.
And what would be the impact on CA if we paid that tomorrow?
Well, I don't think we could turn it around tomorrow, but we could pay it early next week. It would just be added interest expense, and we'd have to juggle some other cash outflows instead.
So what, how much cash is in the?
So why should, why should we insist that the villages juggle and not us?
Right.
Well, I don't, I think that we're juggling already, so it's not, right. I don't mean to say that we're, we're not already trying to manage our cash outflows.
Well, I understand we're trying to manage them, but this is the village's money, so unless the village approves it.
Chime in for a moment?
Sure.
I really think the issue is just communication. From what I understand, it's just that the villages don't know anything.
Yes.
They don't know when they're going to get money. And so I think that if there was some sort of communication where, where you could explain the situation to the village managers, that this is why they haven't received a payment, this is what we're waiting on, and then ask them to, you know, what's the real issue for them? I think right now, it's just they're afraid they're not going to get any money at all. So I think just some, some communication that would sort of say, look, there's, there's a delay, it's a decision based on this, this, and this. And if you can hold out till June 15th, that would be great. If there's an emergency situation, then contact us. I mean, I think, I think everyone's reasonable here. I think the problem is, is just they usually get it by this time, and no one has explained to them why they haven't gotten it. After they were sort of told, you're getting your first quarter and your second quarter draw, and then we may cut it. And now it feels like something different is happening, meaning they're not getting their first quarter. So I think it's just creating a lot of uncertainty.
That's a very good analysis of the problem. I think communication is the key here. And what I got from my meeting last night is a feeling that everybody's in the dark. And so we really need some outreach to the village managers to let them know what's happening. And I think they'll be reasonable to the extent that they can, but they want to be part of the process.
The other thing that I would suggest, because I think you guys stated it pretty well, is that, you know, because we do have a cash flow, maybe we could, for this quarter, do it month by month? So instead of doing, you know, all 800,000 at once for the next three months, you know, do a third this month, a third the next month, and a third the.
That would be fine.
That would, that would help.
A lot.
A lot, you know? But I think, once again, you're right, communication is.
So I would like, right.
You're right.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say you're right.
Right. So as a board member, I would like to jump on the bandwagon of communication. I feel like the situation has become untenable, where we don't hear from people. I've emailed people and gotten no response. I've asked for the term sheet more than once and never gotten it. I've asked for a 13-week cash sources and uses statement. I was told in writing that it was being worked on, and I've never received it. I think that we have to communicate back and forth between the board and senior management, if not weekly, daily. And we can't over-communicate, not in a crisis situation. And be honest, when I'm down at the lake running or something, and employees are pulling me aside and asking me questions, I am embarrassed that they know more about what's going on than I do.
Andy, I'd like to ask a question. If a village received some federal money, if they were lucky enough to get that, I guess the question is for Milton and Susan, how does that fit into the equation? Some, you know, if they got 10,000 or if they got more or something?
It does not fit in the equation, Jenny. Basically.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
The board approved the revised budget on April 23rd, and it showed the amount of the reduction in the annual charge going to the villages, which was equal to what we were projecting our reduction to be. We are, right now, there's no, whatever the villages, I know that some of the villages have received two $10,000 grants. That's not going to impact on the, on what their, their share of the annual charge.
Okay.
And I want to, I want to just follow up that when you say we approved the reduction, we approved the reduction proportionate to what we expect the reduction would be if, and if that happens, then the reduction will happen. But if we don't have a reduction on the income side, then there'll be no reduction on the.
And Alan, I, yes, I acknowledge that. That's the.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure we're clear. Great. I just want to make sure we're clear.
I, I hope, I hope that does come true, that we don't have any reduction, but I'm not holding my breath.
No, you shouldn't hold your breath. You will pass out.
Yes, I know.
Right.
All right.
I would just like to support your idea, Andy, about dividing up the payments. I think that is a creative solution and would really help the villages in terms of their planning, because that's really what we're talking about here. We can't have any long-range planning, we can't even have any month-to-month planning until we know what's coming in. So if that is a possible solution that makes it easier for CA, but still gives some security to the village managers in terms of their planning, that could be a very good way of proceeding.
I'd love to hear a response from management.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you, Susan.
Andy, can I speak, please?
Yeah, Janet?
So I just wanted to say that because we voted to allow the retention of cash reserves, that in the short term, long reach has some buffer as a result of that decision on our part. So if necessary, for Longreach's portion to be postponed, I think that that would be acceptable to the village finances.
That's very nice of you.
I appreciate that. That's a real relationship offer. Thank you.
So maybe we could contact each of the village managers, and where there is a surplus, we could ask them if they could postpone payment until July 1st or some day.
Welcome to mine, and obviously, we are in need of the funds wildly.
I don't know, I don't know what River Hill's cash position is today, but.
We will contact, Kristen is in contact. I know, because I talk to her twice a week. She's in contact with the village managers.
Yes, she is.
Okay.
I have a question before we go on to the council.
All right.
Could somebody tell me? I saw the message from Dan, but it wasn't, maybe I just need extra help because I'm slow, but I saw that they're making plans to open facilities. I know not right away, but my question is, is there any sense of when these facilities might start to open and?
No, well, Nancy, I'm, you know, right now, we have, because the governor lifted the, well, had what was last week was point five, I'm calling it, of phase one, low risk, which allowed us to open the golf courses and two of our tennis centers. We did, we accomplished that on Wednesday, yesterday. The fitness clubs are in phase, are in phase two, medium risk, and we have no, no idea what the timeline is on that. And the other factor we have to deal with, as I found out today, the governor has given discretion to the local, to the local entities, just because I say yes, doesn't mean you have to do it.
Right. Yes.
Well, and specifically, our county executive has said no.
Right.
Doesn't that put, doesn't that put the kibosh on our plans?
No, no, we are, he said, yes, we're, we're in compliance with the, with the tennis, the tennis facilities and the golf courses. That's still phase one. He has nothing else. Well, the other thing that we're considering, that's a possibility in phase one, is the dog park, but we're not there yet. But the fitness clubs are in phase two.
So, so just to recap, Nancy, to understand that, actually, we have our two golf courses and two tennis clubs actually open right now.
Right.
And if you go to the homepage, you will find the instructions on what you need to do and the guidelines or requirements.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
So I read through those materials. I'm very glad that those criteria and those new rules have been set up. So when people come to the golf course, something is presented to them, a piece of paper or something, do they have to sign any kind of acknowledgement that they've read it, that they understand it? The reason I ask this is because simply having it posted, like on a desk, doesn't mean that people are going to read through it. I had to read through it several times, in fact. And the other question, looking at what other places are doing, is ultimately, we may have to do, the county may have to do some contact tracing. If our members signed a sheet saying that they were aware of the new rules, that would really help the county tremendously in terms of eventually having to do some contact tracing when that becomes available. So I'd like to put that out there. The other thing I'm concerned about, of course, is, are the bathrooms.
Yes.
And these are tight, enclosed spaces. The latest science has unfortunately, you know, demonstrated that these are very high-risk areas for transmission. Do we have adequate cleaning, number one? Number two, do we have any rules posted about that? And number three, I'd like to suggest that there are some other places where there are actually attendants. And as people pass through the bathrooms, they are wiping down surfaces, knobs, doors, and things of that kind. Is that something that we can do?
We can look into it, because one of the things we did, Shari, before we opened the tennis and the golf facilities, number one, we went, we followed the practices of Howard County Health Department. We looked at the practice of the Centers for Disease and Prevention Control, and also we went to the respective industries, golf and tennis, and found out what they were doing, because we found out, especially with golf, Maryland was only two of the states that had ever closed golf during the coronavirus. So there's a lot of best practices that we found from other parts of the country through those respective industries.
I just have a question about the whole COVID policy as we reopen. And my question revolves around the team members. We are putting team members out there. I understand that we're going to give them PPE, but what happens if a team member gets sick and tests positive for COVID? Are we giving them any benefits? Are we paying three months of sick leave, like other companies are doing? What are we doing for these team members should they become sick?
We, well, basically, number one, if a team member, if they claim, if they say they have any symptoms, we have protocols where they can go and be tested, so forth. But far as the benefits right now, I can't answer that. What, what we do if someone tested positive and became sick or whatever the case may be.
Well, I believe you're required to, under the CARES Act, you're required to give sick leave for illness or care of a relative. You know, I don't think that CA is exempt from that, so I'm.
Well, that's why I said, that I'm not aware of it. HR has policies, and that would be applicable to any team member.
Okay, so I would like to have a report back at the next meeting that includes what the protocol is going to be as far as policies for team members that become sick with COVID.
We, we have shared that protocol with the board.
What, are we going to give them three months of leave?
I, we will, I will find out. You're asking for a lot of information. We have very limited staff available. We are taking care of our team members. We're fine from following best practices.
Milton, these are questions that are being asked to us by our residents.
Tell the residents, please, go to our website. We have a wealth of information on our website.
Milton, this is about communicating and over-communicating.
You can't, we have certain people available to communicate. We're using our website for a lot of information for our team members and also the public.
I understand. These are reasonable questions.
Okay. Let's, so, so let's try to move on here. We have a list of questions, particularly some of them a little difficult to answer. We'll have to get HR involved. So I'm going to move on to the next meeting, because we're way out of our agenda.
Did I start enough trouble yet?
No, of course.
So do we need to adjourn this meeting?
Yes, this meeting will be adjourned, and now I'm going to proceed to the Columbia Council meeting. Give me a minute here.
You just started it, Nancy, then the rest of us didn't let you get a word in edgewise.
That's exactly what it is.
All right. Columbia Council meeting. We do this once a year, according to the rules that got established years ago. Just a reminder again, that the agenda, the background, is available on our CA webpage. What I'd like to do is move approval of the agenda.
So moved. This is Renee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy. All right. Any objection to the agenda? All right. Agenda's approved. Approval of minutes from May 2019.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy.
Andy, Andy, I have a question.
Yes, Shari.
A point of information. When you say you're talking about the rules of the Columbia Council, it's come to my attention that not everyone on the board has a copy of the Columbia Council Charter.
That's what I'm trying to find.
In terms of the new, we're looking at new board member orientation and all of that. And there are other charters as well. Can we all get a copy of the Columbia Council Charter? It outlines Columbia Council and the CA Board of Directors. This is one of those dual hats that we wear, but I think it's really important that every member of the board have a copy of that charter.
Okay. Shari, I can send you what we found, but I'm not sure there was anything actually labeled as a charter, but we're still. But let me send you what I have, which is like a 1985 version, and then the memo on the background, history background, and then the, the board vote to meet just once a year at the annual meeting. So I'll send you that.
All right.
I would like for you to be all of us, by the way.
I'll see you see the board.
Yes, I think everyone has to take a look at that, and also the, when the rules, when the rules were changed, I would like to know that.
Okay, yeah, that's in the memo. That's in the kind of the memo and also the actual time when they voted. So I will send that out to the board.
Okay.
But that's all I have. I don't have anything that really. But that's all I have. I don't have anything that really calls itself a charter.
Andy, I got a question on this. Um, this is what you and Shari are working on. Uh, at some point, this will all be on our website. All the, all these documents, et cetera, right?
It used to be, it used to be on our website.
Let, let's, let's take that off.
So Shari, I'm going to go into the archives after all this and look for the actual charter.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's not in the documents Andy has.
If there's not a, if there's not a charter, there's got to be a document that authorizes the Columbia Council and says something about it.
Right.
It's Shari and I'm also online.
Oh, hi, Shari.
As far as I know, as far as I know, there is no document that is called the Columbia Council Charter. The purpose, the functions of the Columbia Council are described in the CA Charter. And there is then a document that is called the Columbia Council Procedural Rules. And it is the Columbia Council Procedural Rules that Andy has.
Okay, Shari, Shari, the only thing that I have seen that you produced was a summary document. So the fact that there's a summary document would indicate that there's something in the archives that is the actual foundational document that is the Columbia Council CA Board of Directors. So that's what I think you're looking for.
So let me send out what I have, Shari, and you can look at it.
Great.
Because it gives you a little bit of the background.
We can look in the chat for the charter that's on our website. So you can take a look and see if that answers any of your questions.
Yes, yeah, we have the CA Charter is actually on the website. I mean, um, all right. The minutes.
The charter does have a pretty large paragraph. Our charter has a pretty large paragraph that describes the Columbia Council.
Yeah, so you can look at that, but people were looking for an actual charter for the Columbia Council and we haven't been able to come up with one.
I think that's it.
I think you're right, Alan, but, um, well, well, let's go on to the minutes. There was a motion to approve the minutes, um, from May 9, 2019. Um, is there any objection? Hearing none, they're approved unanimously.
I have a question.
Yes.
The call to order and then to confirm the audio only. We had a resident who asked, and I'm also interested in finding out if this could be done in video as well as audio.
Yes.
As we talked earlier, there could be up to 250 people on this call, so.
Right, we're, we're looking into that. We, we are. I, I, Jess, Jess sent me some information and I sent it on.
Okay.
All right. There's a resolution.
Well, well, wait, I just want to, we need to have this settled soon. And not wait till the next meeting to discuss this again because then we lose another meeting. If we're going to be on virtual like this, this needs to be settled. So I would appreciate if you would, I don't, I don't understand all the back and forth and the information. We know about all, we know about Google Meet and, and its capabilities. It's, this feels like we're containing a process that could be a real simple fix. And we're containing it and having back and forth and making it much harder than it needs to be. So I'd appreciate this being settled next week. So we can get this word out to people.
All right, we'll try to get it settled as soon as possible.
Can I suggest that if you do a virtual, uh, resident speak out, you could ask them to post their name and address in the chat window before they speak.
Exactly, exactly.
Well.
I mean, it could be chaotic. I don't disagree with that.
I would like as a list, as we've done before, so we have it for the historical record and we can include it in our minutes. Because, because if you look at our minutes, our minutes always include.
Right, so for instance, at the beginning of the meeting, if you say, if you would like to speak for resident speak out, put your name and address in the chat window and then we can read down the chat window like you would with any list.
And then we can save the chat, which would always get saved and, and just incorporate that into the minutes.
Record the whole meeting or for, I mean, you know, it, it, more than the audio portion can be recorded, we can record the entire meeting, including the video, though.
And not limited to people who have signed up prior to the meeting, but sign up up until the beginning of the meeting.
I, I do not really know all our IT capabilities, which is why generally when these get asked, I send them all.
But what I'm not understanding is what the concern, so the capabilities are there. So I'm trying to understand, is there a legal implication or something like that that we're evaluating? Because, uh, I, I mean, the IT capabilities are there. I, I'm not understanding why it requires the discussion for that piece of it.
Janet, if I may, basically, we just want to have a conversation. We've gone over the past 18 months, two years, putting up a lot of protection and firewalls when it comes to CA system. This is, what you're, what's being asked is something new. I don't want, I want to have, make sure that IT is comfortable what we're trying to do and it will not compromise our system. We're not trying, if we can do it and it will not compromise our system, yes, it would work. But we have put in, uh, you, everyone knows about the ClearView audits we've had of IT. And they have put in a lot of systems, and as I said, including a lot of firewalls and a lot of protection. And that's what I want to have those conversations with IT, especially, especially our CIO to talk about what can be done as diff, if he can, and making sure it doesn't compromise us.
Can you, uh, can you tell me what our next steps are then and expected, I, I mean, I'm just wondering how many conversations you're planning on having and how long they're expected to take.
Andy sent some information today that we received, that information will be discussed with, we'll, we'll take it to IT, like we've taken all this information.
Can we prioritize this? Because according to the meetings rules, we really have to have a better focus on having open meetings.
Nancy, we will take that information to IT.
That's not said. I would like to know that it's going to be prioritized.
So, um, this is Susan. So we're, we're working on, uh, we have half the staff working every other week, so we're, um, I know that we'll work on that as fast as possible.
Thank you.
All right. So the last thing we have is the resolution to appoint the chair and vice chair of the Columbia Council, make them the same as the, um, board of directors. So is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Renee. Second?
Second.
Nancy.
Yeah, I, and before we vote, or I don't have an objection so much as I just want to make sure we're clear. I was a little surprised to see that resolution already printed out. It's not, it's no, I just want to make it clear to all of us that it's, nowhere is it set in stone that the chair and the vice chair of the Columbia Association have to be the same as the chair and the vice chair of the Columbia Council. And we have done that in the past. We've also done different things in the past. So I just want to make sure we're all aware that we could be, we could be making a different decision if other people have an interest in being chair or vice chair of the Columbia Council.
Alan, well, what we did is we took basically the stuff we did last year.
I understand. That was just one example, though. I understand where it came from. I just don't want it to supersede people's, uh, informed judgment.
Right, yeah. But that's where the resolution came from. That's what was last year, so we just.
Thank you.
All right. Any objections into that resolution? Hearing none? It's unanimous vote. All right, um, so we've actually completed all three of our meetings. I want to thank all of you for, um, showing up tonight. Remind you that, you know, we have a really important meeting came up, you know, May 28. And so make sure you have that on your calendar. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
So wait, before, we're going to not have any meeting about the finances CA until May 28?
If we need one, we can always call a special meeting. But right now, the, the meeting schedule we just adopted said our next meeting is May 28.
I, I think it shows poor judgment to not have more open communication with the board of directors when we are sitting in a very tenuous position with this line of credit and other factors.
I would agree. I mean, we, we've had, what, one or two separate conversations with the, uh, president. I'm not clear why we're not, why we dropped that.
Well, no, if you, if, if, if the board finds it was interesting, let me know and then I can work out another one of those, um, closed work sessions like we did in April.
I, I don't know that they need to be closed. Okay, this is people's money.
Right, but then we have, for that, we have to schedule a special session. Okay, because we just approved the agenda, the, the schedule would show our next meeting is on the 28th.
I understand, but we can call, the, the chairman and vice chairman can call a meeting. Well.
If we need one.
Well, I, I think that we, we have not talked about this in a formal setting for almost two weeks. And then you're asking us to wait another two weeks and we are in the middle of a healthcare slash financial slash leadership crisis and we have no communication.
Well, unless, Andy.
Yes, yes, Jenny.
Unless I'm missing something here, um, Milton and Susan are working on this, I think is obviously as soon we'll be on, everybody will be on top of them and get the answers. As soon as they get those, we will, we will be working with the board to inform them. We'll have a meeting. It's just we don't know what date and hopefully, in my opinion, it will be before the 28th. But it's possible, you know.
Well, I'm concerned in terms of communication that we were told that we were, for example, we were expected to have this loan approved by the end of the month. It's been two months later and no one has said, there's been no communication to say it was or it wasn't. So we've been sitting here saying, well, must be bad news. Now, maybe individual people have contacted, uh, Milton or, or, uh, Susan and have gotten different answers, but that's not communication to the board.
No, I, I just said the whole board.
Right.
As soon as we hear, I think, I, I agree with what you're saying. It's, I don't, if it can be before the 20th and I sure as heck hope it will be, we'll be meeting.
I, I just feel like.
I, I thought that was a, you know, assumed, I guess.
I think that this, I mean, we're, we are in a very tenuous position.
Right, I, I, I think, I agree.
Okay, to leave the board of directors, we have a moral and legal responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility of care, which includes financial solvency of this organization. And we are being left out in the cold. And I, I personally am tired of hearing about what decisions are being made from employees on the street, some of which have been laid off, village managers and other people, and not hearing it from senior leadership. I think it's wrong. I don't think we can over-communicate back and forth between senior leadership and the board of directors. That's all I'm asking for is two-way communication, a regular, consistent basis.
So I, I'm going to offer a suggestion. I don't know if it'll be helpful or not, but we, again, my organization is a lot smaller than this one and it doesn't, it's not an HOA, but we were having some bumps in the road and I started writing a weekly email to my board at the end of the week with just an update on what's going on. So maybe, uh, maybe a temporary solution during this uncertain time would be sort of a weekly update on the, you know, whatever the top three things that the board is concerned about, just sort of either, hey, there's news, hey, there's no news. Now, I know, you know, some of this stuff is legal, contract negotiations, so there may be, you know, uh, we may want to be careful about that, but I do, you know, maybe there's a, a middle ground here.
I, I, we already get that memo and it's okay for what it is, but in reality, we all have some very serious questions about what's going on. I personally have emailed Susan Krabi asking for a copy of the term sheet and never gotten it. Okay, I am entitled to that as a board member. I'm tired of people spreading rumors in my community and I have no way of saying it's a rumor or not a rumor. Open communication would solve 99% of our problems. That's all I'm asking for is open communication. So if you guys want to have meetings, I'm fine with that, but I think open communications would mean all the difference. And that's what real leaders do. They communicate. Okay.
Anything else? Yeah, Jess will, I mean, we'll make sure you get the weekly updates.
I'd like to hear from other board members, though, who haven't spoken up about whether there's interest in another face-to-face or voice-to-voice conversation. I mean, I think the weekly memo would be a good thing, but if it's only a couple of us, then it's only a couple of us and that's not a mandate from the board.
Move on, right. I'm willing to move on.
I think if we're getting a weekly update, if we're getting information, um, about what's going on, I think that's helpful. Whether we have a meeting or not, it's the same information. It's a different way of transmitting it. It is important that we get the information, one way or another. I'm, right now, I'm more concerned about the information or lack thereof going to the villages, so, um.
Well, I, I'd like to see a weekly summary of what's been going on, but I think there are things that happen day to day. And if it's an important piece of news, for example, if, if we find out we have the trust arrangement all worked out, I'd like to know that immediately.
Absolutely.
A weekly, a weekly summary is fine, but, uh, you know, we need to know when, when the stuff hits.
So I withdraw my, my comment.
Now, I, I agree with what Dick has said because we have been talking about timely information, timely communication. And I think if some of this financial information, and let's, let's be realistic about this, if this needs to be in a closed meeting, then it should be in a closed meeting. The advantage to scheduling a closed meeting is that we can, we can list it the week before so that we know and the community knows that a meeting is going to be held and a meeting was held and we can have minutes and we can just do the same thing that we've, that we've always done. So the advantage of not waiting until, until something happens is that we can actually get it on the schedule. So that might be something for us to think about. On the weeks when we are not meeting in regular session, can we schedule a short closed meeting for a financial update?
I would support that.
Yeah, um, I, I could see scheduling it and then if they don't have any news, one way or the other, we reschedule for maybe when they think they would, maybe a day or two later or something, if that's feasible. So that at least you know it's on the calendar for a certain date prior to the 28th.
I think that should go two ways, though, because it may be that there are board members who have questions. And so if there are, if there, there may be board members who have questions. And so then a meeting should be scheduled to get those questions resolved.
And we may have good information to give back to the staff, things that we are hearing from our communities. If there are concerns, if there are rumors out there, if people are expressing concerns, then we can get that in a timely fashion to the leadership team rather than having to wait two weeks. So there are advantages to, to doing it that way, at least in this interim, uh, type of crisis situation.
So what I, what I hear, Andy, I think you hear people saying is like next, uh, Thursday, schedule. So what I, what I hear, Andy, I think you hear people saying is like, next Thursday, schedule sort of an update.
A closed session on.
Finance, finance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be a long meeting. It can be a 30-minute meeting.
Look, did you find those April work sessions with Milton, when we talked about, you know, the COVID's impact useful?
Yes.
Crucial.
Yes, of course.
Right, all right, yeah, I'm certainly willing to go back.
It's the same, the same thing.
And do that, and do that. I just, I got to admit, I didn't get a whole lot of feedback from the board as to whether you, you thought they were useful or not.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm hearing, so.
What I'm hearing now is you liked those and we'll try to do those again.
So it sounds to me like Andy is waiting for feedback from the rest of us.
If we, if something happens that we like, we need to say so. Because if, if we don't say so, he's going to assume that we don't care about it and it's not going to happen. So I think Andy really needs to hear more from us, too.
So, so what I'm hearing, I think we're hearing is next Thursday, we will have a meeting. And it can be during the day. And at least an hour scheduled.
Not, not everybody can do things during the day.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alan, okay.
People work.
Okay, sorry about that, okay.
Well, if you remember what we did, is we offered, you know, like 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock, that time.
Good.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay, so, so we're going to do it.
We'll work, we'll get that set up.
Okay.
That's wonderful. I really appreciate it.
I, I think that's going to be helpful to everyone.
And I'll let you, I'll send out, of course, an email as soon as we got everything set up.
Mm-hmm, good, sounds great.
Thank you for working on that.
That information will also include what's going on with the villages' funding, I hope.
Yes.
We'll, we'll make it, you know, focused on, on finances. But another one of those like question-and-answer sessions where you got an opportunity to, to talk. I mean, I found those interesting, at least because people got a chance to ask their question, right, to Milton.
Yes, yes.
Good.
Yeah, but the focus would be finances, but it would be open, but we're going to keep it to an hour, okay?
Right, that's fine.
Yeah, well, we're disciplined. We, we, we will, we can do it in an hour.
Yeah.
No, but this, this is a crisis time. It's just, we need to communicate more, so this is good.
All right, so good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay healthy, everybody.
Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, everybody stay well.
Okay, you too.